Welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, May eighth. I'm going to remind everybody that the meeting is being recorded. It will be available for replay on the town's website within a few days. I'm going to start with attendance. Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Feely.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
And welcome to our newest member Greg Demersion. Greg, welcome.
Here, welcome. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome Greg.
Felt that our other newcomer Kirsten Brown is unable to attend. Her son's graduating from college and she's traveling for that. She's got a good excuse for for that. So congratulations to her and her son. There is no legal notice to read tonight. So we can skip that portion. We do have a couple of continued hearings, one of which is asked for continuance as our custom. I'm going to read that into the record for anyone that's here for the application of thirty-two Nahant Street LLC. I received a letter from Attorney Paul Haverty who represents that development team. I'll read that into the record. This office represents thirty-two Nahant Street LLC, the applicant, the applicant for a comprehensive permit located thirty-two Nahant Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts. The board's last hearing this matter was continued to its May eighth meeting. With the presumption that the meeting would be continued if the applicant was not able to meet with the Traffic Advisory Committee before May eighth. The Traffic Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet on May tenth. Accordingly, the applicant requests a continuance of the hearing to the board's next regularly scheduled meeting on May twenty-second. The applicant also submits herein the copy of the resume Scott Green, the applicant's manager detailing the construction projects he's completed as requested by the board. If you have any questions, please contact me, Attorney Haverty. So if someone can have a motion to continue that until May twenty-second, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue that the matter at thirty-two Nahant Street to our May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded in discussion. Hearing seen on regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes too. Also on the roll call, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Tom Lucy. I'm obviously here for the record. With that, we can continue on to continued hearings. First case up is case twenty-four-ten, the residents at Nahant LLC. I believe I see Mr. Panos and his architect on the line.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Wakefield Sony Board of Appeals. For the record, my name is Jason Panos, practicing law at two forty-six Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. Thank you for the past grant of continuance. On May third, we submitted to the board a new site plan. Drafted by the Warren Cameron Group, Scott Cameron, who was a principal of the Warren Cameron Group is actually with us tonight. We also submitted from the Warren Cameron Group a response to an engineering comment letter that was submitted. We included in the submission a sixteen sheet revised design plan. And we also included a response to TAC VHB memo from our traffic consultant, Vanessa and Associates. And today we provided the board with a resume with representative projects as you asked for the project principal on behalf of the applicant.
So Mr. Panos, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But I did want to ask a question on that before we moved on. The the material that was received today was from relative to a gentleman named Peter Panzalios. I apologize for the mispronunciation. Looking at your application though, is he a member of the residents at Nahant Street LLC? Because the site owner and most of the ownership is listed under Jason Kearney. We have not been familiar with this gentleman. It has not been out there with this project. Is there something new there or?
No, he is. So the applicant is the residences at Nahant LLC. And he is the manager. That was the applicant before for project eligibility with mass housing. And was the named applicant for to the town for this project. Mr. Kearney is the is the property owner and obviously had to assent to all of these applications. Included in the mass housing materials and I believe also the the application submitted to the town was a letter of intent to purchase between the residences at Nahant LLC and Mr. Kearney through his various entities. So Mr. Panzalios is the manager and a member of the of the applicant LLC, yes.
Okay. Has he attended any of the meetings that we've had on this?
He has not.
Okay. Does he intend to do that?
I do not believe so. He normally doesn't, but.
I would encourage it. I'd like him to hear firsthand from neighbors and from the board, from the town's subject matter experts as has been. As you've heard throughout these hearings and throughout this process, there's grave concerns about this project. And I for one would like the the owner to be a little bit more accountable here and to be before the town, be before this board and allow him to hear from residents as well. So I know that's not required, but I'm putting it out there.
Sure. And and I'm sorry.
The other thing I could say, Tom, looking at his resume is I don't think he's ever had a give and take like this. If you look at all the projects that he's done, it's mostly commercial. There's one with a little bit of a residential aptitude towards it, but that's right next to a mall. So I from what I can see on his resume, this is the first project that he's done within a residence, within an area that has neighbors where he would be being asked to make some concessions on size based on what he's hearing and based on, you know, as we've been going through and through on on this project. So it it I know he passed if if his name's been involved, but you know, the resume is not impressive on housing. It's certainly a builder's resume for commercial and retail, but not housing. So, but I know mass housing approved it. So if he was there, so be it.
Yep, that's my thinking as well. I'd also add that for a reminder for both folks on the board and neighbors are on the call, there is a subcommittee on this of the board that consists of Mr. Tarbell and myself. We met with Mr. Panos and his team on Monday to organize ourselves for tonight. We agreed for tonight that we would go over the site plan and the updated design. In terms of the matters that Mr. Panos referenced, responding to DPW, responding to TAC. We did not want to cover those matters as we've done as a board, as a practice, until we have those subject matter experts from the town available at the meeting with us. So the game plan we came out of Monday night with was to go over the site plan and the design that was submitted to everybody on Friday afternoon by the development team. Chip, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's a good representation of what we discussed Monday. And and as has been the practice, not necessarily in our past cases, but in this case, the development team is not willing to talk about size and quantity of units until all the work for TAC has been done.
Right. So, Mr. Panos, are you in agreement with what we said there? And are you ready to present what we just talked about?
Yes, but for clarity purposes, just to keep things moving as materials, whether we address them at an instant hearing or at some future hearing, I'm going to continue to provide the board with the materials as they are available. Is that your preference?
Yes, they've been very scarce today and that's been the complaint of this board to you. So yes, please keep the information, updated information coming. We want to review it. We want to have time to review it. So if the earlier the better. Our deadline is Friday, but you don't have to wait to the deadline.
All right. So if we can share a screen.
Please do.
Hopefully it will go smoother than Monday night. And it already has.
Chip, that was us Monday night, so.
Oh, was it? Oh, sorry. Gave a jab to ourselves.
Self-deprecation is never a bad thing.
Absolutely.
So this is basically a cleaned up version of the PowerPoint we presented on Monday. We stripped out the traffic analysis and we're prepared to discuss some of the things that you added. However, there's more material that will be forthcoming as the design team continues to work out. For example, calculations on on what makes the open air garage an open air garage, that type of thing. So if it pleases the board, we'd like to continue. The development team is myself, Stefano Basso from SV Design and Scott Cameron from the Warren Cameron Cameron Group. Just to reacquaint you with the site. It comprises four parcels, two residential houses up front on Nahant Street, a commercial dwelling and what you might term as a kind of contractor's yard out out to the right and to the back. This is just the 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 background, but what's led, what's what's brought us to this point is basically a full redesign of this project and you will see the new site plan and you will see the new design proposed, taking into account a lot of the town comments that we have read and experienced through the various meetings and subcommittee meetings. It is still a work in progress. There is still some engineering to do. But we are getting there steadily and surely. And Scott will tell you once, present to you what is what is outstanding. But I think we have a good restart from tonight, if you will. The you will you will see through the site plan that the the revised site plan that the proposed building is more centered to the site. That is to accommodate for easier emergency apparatus access from all corners or all sides of the building. You might recall that the fire chief had concern that with the original development proposal where the building was off to the west side of the of the property that he could only access Nahant Street and one side on the east. And maybe maybe the back. So now that it's centered, there's a turnaround drive accessway throughout. The design, the redesign of the building scales back, the the massing along Nahant Street pushes it further back into the rear of the property where it has less of a an imposing impact on the streetscape. And in line with that, there's a deeper front yard setback along Nahant Street. So before, I think the closest point to Nahant Street was around five or six feet. Now it's closer to ten feet back. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you see the three D imaging, you'll you'll see that the that it does mitigate how this building imposes on the streetscape. And there's been a revision in the type of in the roof line, the siding types and and certain details that Stefano will talk with you about tonight. The next slide, if it pleases the board, I will hand it over to Scott Cameron, who will walk you through the new site design. Scott through the chair.
Yeah, please, Scott, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board and the public attendance tonight. For the record, my name is Scott Cameron. I'm the owner and professional civil engineer with the Warren Cameron Group at sixty-six Elm Street in Danvers. And and yeah, I'm the new guy on the team. Jason contacted me about two months ago when when Tony, the former engineer moved moved on. He's in a different sector of the industry now and doing great. But I've come on and and in quick water and getting up to speed with the project and had a lot of reading and reviewing and and getting caught up. So we have spent the past month getting into the getting into the project, conducting our own due diligence in the form of confirmatory surveys. We're going, getting into the utilities existing on site. We're looking to do some additional soil testing in the next week or so. I have actually had a couple of me conversations in a meeting with Tony, the former engineer. So we've got a really strong handoff to to my role now. And I've also had an initial conversation with Bill Rinal down at the engineering department who'll be doing, I understand, the bulk of the technical review on this from the civil engineering standpoint. So with that, the point in the project where I'm coming in now is taking the preliminary design where the building's been shifted to the middle of the site and taking that preliminary design and in engineering that from a technical perspective to function. And the current site plan before you has received a good amount of of updating and polishing. Just a couple of the highlights on this plan. On the westerly side, frontage, there's your one-way-in aisle that's twenty feet wide. That would continue south around the back of the property. At the rear of the building, this would open up into a two-directional aisle twenty-four foot wide and continue on in two directions, back out to the other curb cut on Nahant Street. The circulation around the building is multipurpose. It's designed to accommodate the largest Wakefield fire apparatus. We've received that information from the fire department. They will be providing you with swept path analysis in future submissions. So you can see that. We have included features. As you come in on the westerly side, there's four parallel parking spaces. These are your, while they could be used for overnight, but these were tend to be more of your short-term drop-off spaces for you know, Amazon deliveries, Ubers, you know, et cetera, that are, you know, food deliveries, things like that, that are quick stops in and out. The spaces, the next set of spaces are angled, those are the front door. The angle is to reinforce a one-directional flow of traffic through that corridor. You will note there are four stack spaces. We've had really good success on on stacking and parking like this. Stefano and I just just finished a project that's under construction now in Beverly in which we we did this. And these are typically, when a lot of tenants will come into the building, they they just have a second car and that could be a car that they they don't use so so often or but they have a need for two and they can they can lease a tandem parking setup like this and keep one car in the back and and they manage that themselves. So it's very manageable from a from a property ownership perspective. And it's a good way to save save on space so you don't have to have a full aisle attached to each of those spaces. So it's a good use of of that that efficient design design technique. As you come around the back of the building in the south end, you're going to have a two-directional garage entrance. The garage is divided into two sections. The rear section is two-directional. Stefan will go through that with you. And then as you come around the building, right on the southerly end, there's a series of eight compact parking spaces. This is a good area of the of the total parking on site. Those are a little less than nine percent of the total number, so a very reasonable ratio of compact, the full size. There's another four under the overhang just to the left of where the cursor is too. So a total of twelve spaces there. And then heading back out, there's going to be another primary entrance further up towards Nahant Street. You can see the handicap parking spaces right off of that, just past that. On the west side of that aisle is the other garage entrance. That would be the garage, the section in the front of the building that's parallel with Nahant Street before you exit back out. We have adapted the site plan. Stefano's been very good with listening to the civil engineer about minor adjustments to the building footprint so that we can accommodate a full five-foot, minimum five-foot wide sidewalk and curbing around their entire perimeter of the building. So three sixty a access. We worked with Stefano's team to switch the trash room from the easterly side of the building to the westerly. This just makes it more front and center to that side of the building, a larger area. So the a truck can come up in 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 hall. The the trash receptacles can be moved by hand, so they move out to the to the trash truck from that space. That that's also a good central location of the building, so all residents can get to the trash room with relative ease. Moving forward, you know, we've only gotten into this, the horizontal design to this point. While we have been working on the vertical and the vertical, when I say that, the vertical is your grading, your drainage, your utility systems, things like that. We've been doing that. I don't have it on a plan here, but that has been underway behind the scenes. And that's that's where a lot of our work occurs where, you know, we're conducting the soil, additional soil testing, sewer investigations, checking water pressures and flows out in the street, things of that nature are all all happening right now. And we're looking to get together for you in early June, a submission of a complete permit plan set that would include a cover sheet with all and notes in the index sheet with all the the fine print that goes with the construction documents, existing addition survey that was done by Haze Engineering. We're actually supplementing that with additional survey work that we're putting together. But we'll be using the Haze survey as a base. That's already been submitted to you. Will include information on demolition and site prep, erosion and sediment controls. Obviously, your grading and drainage, your utility connections. This will have water, sanitary sewer, fire suppression, electric communications. We don't expect a stormwater connection. We're still working through that now. And at the meeting on Monday, you did confirm some of the things we've we've identified with with where we we see in our site visits and investigation where the water is going. So we're working on making sure that that is mitigated. You know, and the project will will improve improve conditions in that regard. Construction details and then technical reports, drainage, stormwater management, operation and maintenance during construction, long-term operations, maintenance. The documents you're accustomed to seeing, even a stormwater, all that backup data that Mr. Rinal will be reviewing. With that, I think I just want to leave you with, we're very much in the throes of the civil engineering design work right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the site plan or if you continue with the presentation.
Well, i- if you could do me one favor, the board has seen that table down on the lower left. But residents that are here have not. If you could bring that up and blow it up a little bit so people can see that. That would be helpful. Folks might be interested in that.
Yep. So this is a dimensional table, current current state of the plans that that are before you tonight. Where we lay out for you the underlying, you know, the the zoning dimensional requirements that are in place, which is both the the B, business B and the single residence SR districts, and then where we stand with the current design. So, you know, row one is your lot area, row two density, row three frontage. It's it's fairly self-explanatory. And then in the plan, you can find those respective dimensions on the plan for reference. You can see where those those occur in the property.
Do you have the percentage of green space versus impervious surface on the site?
We have. So we have it on this table as the open area calculation. Now, your open area and your zoning definition does include walkways and other things that are non-vehicular. We're still working on the the literal impervious coverages because that's part of our stormwater management design. So I don't have a final number on that right now. But where it stands right now on the zoning definition of open area is twenty-five percent.
We'd be interested in that literal number as well.
Yep.
If that's the conclusion of your presentation, Mr. Cameron, I'd like to throw it open to the board for questions. Comments? Board members?
Mr. Chair, Mickey Philly. I was reading your your letter of March, oh, excuse me, May second. That was part of the package that Mr. Panos sent along on Friday. And it was, I was reading with the, one of the comments to the DPW, their their questions. Specifically, the project has been reconfigured. Your response was the project, project has been reconfigured pursuant to feedback from the board. Reduced density from one-twenty to a hundred units. Is this a recent development?
The. I can step in. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Panos.
All right. So you might recall the original proposal was for a hundred and twenty units. However, that density reduction occurred from to a hundred units during the project eligibility process. You might.
Which happened before you, that but that happened before you met us, is that correct?
It happened before we met the board, but what I was about to say is I don't recall if at the site visit with mass housing, any of the board members were present. It was about a year ago, so pardon my bad memory. But were any of the board members present at that mass housing site visit?
I don't think so. We were not notified. Speak up.
You were not notified? Well, it happened a while ago. But typically, what happens is when we file for project eligibility, the town gets notified and then within within a few days of that notification, the town is supposed to notify all local boards who may be invited to attend the mass housing site visit. In any event, I know there were several town council members there. There were several DPW staff, town hall planning, that that type of thing who are who are at the site visit. And there were a lot of comments that came from that site visit. And that is what resulted in the twenty-unit reduction. You're on mute, Mr. Field.
The reason I bring it up is that in the letter, the from Warren Cameron of May second said, "The project has been reconfigured pursuant to feedback from the board to reduce the density from one-twenty units to a hundred units." I just haven't through this process in our board review. There hasn't been any reduction based upon feedback from the board.
Yeah, you should amend that letter appropriately.
Sure. And I mentioned that because the project eligibility letter is for no more than a hundred units. So to get some sort of, I I just don't want to, I I know the game, some of this is a game, but I I don't want.
It's not a game.
I don't want kind of the trying to get some board street cred by saying you made a reduction when you haven't. And you can't by the project eligibility letter. You can make a reduction, you can't go over on, no more than a hundred units. So this started from the get-go. It's not a game.
It's not a game, and it didn't start from the get-go. From the get-go was the project eligibility process, which was a proposal for a hundred and twenty units. Through the project eligibility process, it got reduced to a hundred units, which resulted in the project eligibility letter noting that.
It does.
You are right that the application to the town was for a hundred units. And Mr. Cameron will will amend his letter recording. There is no game going on.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to clarify, I think those site visits for both this and thirty-two Nahant were public notice as properly done so by the town. But I just don't think members of this board attended. I think it was
Yeah.
Other other parties in town attending, but I don't think I I did. Other, other parties in town attending, but I don't think, I I did, I was aware of them, but I didn't, I figured it was gonna. Come to us eventually, but I did not go to the site visit at that time, um. So I appreciate the updates and um welcome Mister Cameron to the project, um. So obviously, still got some work to do, and I saw from the letters, there's still a fair amount of site work to review, and and I think they're saying. They're gonna have something in June, um more details to share with the us and other town officials, um. You know, uh, you know, again, appreciate the increase in setback from the road from five feet to twelve feet, but. To be honest, five-story building, sixty-one feet high, twelve feet from the curb is still quite imposing. We can look at the pictures, and I'm sure we will shortly, but it's still a pretty high building, twelve feet from the curb. So um that's, that's um still quite imposing um in my mind, um. And, um. And just a perhaps more of a minor thing, we'll see where it evolves, but that trash location is a trash bin or a couple of. Bins inside the building. Adequate. Or a potential building of a hundred units. I think we've seen buildings of this even smaller than this have outdoor dumpsters. Maybe one for trash, one for recycling. I, I don't, I, is is it reasonable to expect upwards of a hundred units to use a couple of trash bins? And for somebody to wheel them out to the curb? I just don't, I don't know, I just don't think we've seen projects like. You know, even the ones on North Ave that are, you know, thirty, whatever they are, right, twenty-eight, thirty units, they all have dumpsters, right? Um so I just think about that, I just don't know the feasibility and practicality of that. But still overall, way too big, you've heard it before, we're gonna get there eventually. Need, need to have the conversations with the right public officials when it, when the process has been vetted, but. I'll I'll hold on that for now, because we've already made our point clear on that one, but just a few observations on this drawing and the updates.
Thank you. Mister Chair, would you like uh Stefano to talk about the trash placement?
Let's hold on that, let's, let's get through the site plan, uh anybody else?
Yeah, Mister Chair, real quick, can we uh ver- um clarify the parking, what's the parking right now as it stands?
One hundred and thirty-seven spaces.
So you're short, like you're short thirteen spaces theoretically?
About twenty, per the bylaw. The three bedrooms need two parking spaces and everything else is one and a half, so I did the calculations last time. Yeah, I think it's one fifty-five is required per the bylaw, I know it's a forty B, but.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to have that clarified for the record, that's all.
And I know that presenters of forty Bs tend to go on a one point five av- you know, average count, but. Again, we just, we need to know that there's gonna be enough, but it still seems like they're short by any measure.
Yeah, I just want to second what you said earlier, Dave, um. I know that that the table shows business and single residence, but. Let's call it what it is, this is a, in my mind, this is a single resident zone, so. And that's thirty-five feet, and we're, we're, we, you know, we're above sixty feet. So, just, you know, right on the street, so that's just, it's way too big, it's just gonna towel right over the street, and you. You know, we're gonna see that in a couple of these photos coming up, how. How some of the renderings just look overpowering, that. Just a thought, uh, that's, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Joe, anybody else? Okay, I um, couple things. That tandem parking, you know, yeah, I know there's only a few, it doesn't work, those people end up on the street, I don't care. What you're doing with the project in Beverly or anyplace else, they don't work, you're gonna end up with those cars out in the neighborhoods. That tandem parking, uh uh. Uh I think is a disaster. Also want to just call out the transformer, um I don't expect you to have an answer tonight because this is relying on other people too. The location's awful, you're gonna have. You know, the the entirety of this building for a pedestrian or anyone going by even slowly is you having a large building there. And then now you have the transformer there, given the new building code. However big this thing ends up being, is that transformer that's depicted here big enough? To deliver the capacity for a building of this size, because you're gonna do your heating and everything else through there. We also try to work hard not to have the transformer right out in the face of the public, is there someplace else on this site where you can? Place it, and while people need access to it, shield it, uh at least visually from people. Uh in the neighborhood, so it's not right in their face. Um and again, if you could check the capacity on that, and how big is it actually gonna be, is that little square you have on the site plan? Truly representative of what's gonna uh the size of it. And then I mentioned the, you know, the the lack of green space here while we're looking at the site plan is just. You know, it relates to the size of the building, but you you have a ton of impervious surface out there, you have very little. Little tiny pieces of green out there, um. It, it's, it it's not great, uh, um. And we wouldn't allow this on anything, anything like this in in Wakefield with that little green space. Um I know it's forty B, but I mean. The lack of green spaces is ridiculous, so. Um those are my comments, I'll give uh any other comments to board members before we move on to design. Okay, hearing none, let's uh, let's hear from the architect then, please, Mister Panos.
Yes, so Stefano Bosso is here from SV Design. I'll uh let Stefano through the chair uh identify himself for the record.
Hey, good evening, uh Stefano Bosso from SV Design. Um.
Address.
One twenty-six Dodge Street in Beverly. Uh so, a lot of what you see on our ground floor plan here, um. Like with what Scott was showing you, I'll just run through some of the highlights um coming into the building. We have extended sidewalks on either side of the building. Um that run up and meet Mahan- Mahan Street, um to the new sidewalk we're putting in along the street. Uh we have uh two entrances on the east and the west side. Um the west side entrance uh houses the mail and package room, um that would be for uh drop-off uh loading zone as well. On the east side is the primary entrance lobby, that's where the management sales um offices. And that also fronts on to our outdoor green space. Um so that's about a thousand square feet of uh lawn and planted area, uh with some trees in it. We have, um. Uh second means Vgress at the fire stair down here towards the rear of the building. And then the trash room, as Scott noted, is over here on the west side where the building starts to bend. Um so the scheme we have there is uh trash chutes with a drop-off at each floor level down to a compactor. And the compacted trash would feed into two cubic yard dumpsters, um so that's what would be. Wheeled out um to the street when the truck is there for pickup.
So Mister Bosso, to Mister Hatfield's question, have you ever done a hundred-unit project with the trash in this format?
This is typical of what we do, um and then the the pickup is coordinated based on volume. Um but a trash chute and a recycling chute with the compactor is a standard for this type of design. Um the two entrance lobbies are joined, um on the middle, they separate the two. Um two sides of the garage, uh so you can access the lobby from either side of the garage or either side of the site. They feed into uh elevator lobby and stairwell here in the middle, um they run up the building. And I'll just point out in the the part of the garage along the hot street, in addition to some utility space, the water room. Um uh switchgear room, we have some uh bike storage in here. Um so those would be vertical bike racks mounted um for residents to store their bikes inside here. Moving up to a typical upper floor. Um pretty similar layout to what we had before, the shape of the building has changed from more of a an L shape with a jog in it. To more of a J shape with a jog in it. Um we've located some common amenity spaces. Right off the elevator lobby here, so those would be the fitness room, community room, things like that. Um we've tried to include balconies on as many of the units as we can, um so you'll see those popping off. Also notice along the perimeter, uh bay windows, um bumping out in a few step-ins where the building steps in. About four feet um at various locations. The trash drop-off is here towards the center of the building, and then a back um leg of the building where the stair is. I should point out that there is uh one section of the building on the back here. Um that overhangs some open air parking spaces, um so the footprint of the building. On the ground floor runs with the um sixty-five foot. Wide uh double-loaded parking corridor, and then that overhang of the building comes over some of these uh outdoor parking spaces here. Moving up to the fifth floor, um you'll see uh the fifth floor occupies um the rear wing of the building. Uh so this is the same storefront layout as we have below on the typical floors. But at the front of the building here, um this is one of the uh bigger massing moves we made, um when we relocated the building. Uh one of the comments we received was to uh reduce the height of the building along the hot street. Um so if you recall, initially, we had a five-foot step-back on the the hot street face of the building. Um so now we've removed uh the bulk of the fifth floor from the entire wing. Um the only piece that pops up to the fifth floor here is the elevator and stair. Um that come through and then uh community lounge space with the small roof deck area. So this, this piece is largely shielded from view from street level. To reduce the height that's visible from the hot street to four stories. Looking at the renderings here, um we have a couple of street views, uh we have this one. Uh heading east towards downtown from the west. Um that we've included, we have one from the opposite side, and then the rest of the renderings um. Don't have uh street views in them, they're just uh views of the building. Uh so here, we're trying to give a sense of the scale in the existing context um with the neighboring houses. Um you can see the sidewalk that we've added here, um. That runs through and some plantings in the front. Um one of the comments that we received during Monday's subcommittee uh meeting was that. Um we should look at the size of the plantings that are shown.
Excuse me.
Um so we can provide some more information on the caliber of trees that are uh that will be planted. But the plan is to um install mature trees, um mature plantings from day one. So that's something that we're gonna go back and provide more detailed information on, um but the plan is to try to not put anything. Too dinky in there so that it feels um pretty established early on and doesn't need, you know, five or ten or more years to really. Fill out. Um this is the two-direction, two-directional driveway uh in and out of the hot street. We've added a little bit of a a corner bump out of the building here. Um you'll notice the sloped roofs at the top, so that's a new feature that we didn't have originally. Um so here at the top of the fourth floor, we have a sloped roof. Um we also have uh sloped roof wash down at the floor line of the top floor. Uh which will be clearer in another view. Let me just jump over. So now we're heading away from downtown, heading east. Um you can see the building in the background here. Um four-story piece in the front with a five-story wing off the back here. Can see a little bit more of what's going on with the building um from this view. So you can see some of these uh bump out at the corner, bump in along the wall. Um we, we have in most areas uh standing scene metal roof wash at the floor line of the top floor. Um give the building a little bit more of a dormer top story effect. Um we also have uh the balconies that I mentioned um here, so these get a covered roof at the top. We have the uh similar standing seam metal roof wash at a little bump in here above the garage door. Um as Jason mentioned, this is an open-air garage, so uh we have these punched openings here with the. Black metal infill grading. Um the base of the building all the way around, um except right at the entry lobbies is a field stone. Um so we bring a little bit of a more traditional New England um material to the base. Uh the stone, obviously, is very durable, can withstand some more wear and tear at the bottom. Moving up the building, uh the typical siding is a lighter medium gray clapboard. Um and we're using uh pale blue clapboard for some accent areas. We're using a a medium gray trim typically around the building. Um we've maintained the same black sash windows everywhere. Um and up at the top, we have a white panel, a smooth panel siding. With uh one by trim on the face of the panel. View, uh if you head down the bidirectional uh driveway towards the main entry lobby. Um this is the lobby here, you can see some of our typical um bay. Bay window bump outs here with the standing seam metal roof wash wrapping around. Um on the five-story portion of the building, we've stopped those bays at the fifth floor line. And kept the roof there, but not extended the bay all the way up. Um we're really trying to to work, work at uh breaking up the massing of the building as you follow the walls um around. So this section here is the four-foot step-back, um so we have a siding change there. We've broken the uh sloped roof up at the top of the building for this portion. Um and run that down to get a little bit of a break, um provide a little bit of variation in the facade. On the five-story portion of the building, we also run the blue siding along the second floor. So we maintain this relationship of two stories of gray clapboard consistently. The lobby is all uh covered with storefront glass with uh black uh millions. And we bring back that blue color scheme in a smooth panel and trim um cladding. And then off to the left here is the outdoor lawn area, we're envisioning. You know, they might have some grills set up, some lawn furniture, um little place to get outside. On the opposite side of the building, this is the west lobby with the mail package room, um so these are the. Um four parallel parking spaces, um as you come in off the uh entrance-only driveway. So this would be your quick drop-off loading spaces. You can see the four-story portion of the building here again. And then moving back to the five-story portion, another similar bump in here, um at a different scale. And then some more balconies across here, in a, in two or three spots, we have a one-foot box pay bump out. Um so we're trying to provide that variety on the facade without doing too many different things, but just add a little bit of depth and texture. Working within a more restrained color palette, we're also showing some more decorative flowering trees. Um at this entrance to to give it a little bit of its own feel over here. These are the materials we talked about. We have technical elevations that call out, um they tag each of the materials, so. You can see um exactly what uh siding type, um what material, what color we're using everywhere. Technical building section that we don't need to run through unless anybody has questions. And then on our landscape plan, have a question?
Cause Sumi, while we get through the whole presentation, then we'll do it, if that's okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna wait till the end.
So we've called out. A sort of a category of plantings here and tag those back at different locations. So you can see what we're thinking for these different planting bed locations. Along the front of the building here, we're trying to use taller shrubs in locations where we have more fieldstone wall to help try to. Conceal some of the height of the wall in those locations. And then we have lower, more decorative or flowering. Either decorative grasses or wildflowers in other locations that are more right in line with where the pedestrians are. We're calling for all native and drought-tolerant species. Because we want them to be easy to maintain and to look good for a long time. We are also showing some lighting locations. Here on this landscape plan, so we have pole-mounted lights around the perimeter. And we can provide more information on lighting as we move forward, but we just wanted to locate those. So we can capture that to start the conversation.
Okay, so. I'm gonna turn it over to the board in a minute to ask questions and I know, consuming a couple of things. To the board that Chip and I talked about on Monday night. As you probably saw with some of the plans, this, there appears to be some minor inconsistencies between the design. And some of the renderings that were shown. So we've asked them to look hard at coordinating their plans. So all the trees are placed in the right place, both for renderings and in the site plan. So we've caught that. And then also, we asked for a context study, a height study, however you want to term it, of the. The heights of the building around it versus this, they. They seem to indicate that they were willing to do that as well. Chip, anything else from Monday night based on that? Chip?
Well, you might have. You got, I, my, nobody's a lip reader. Sorry about that. No, I think, Tom, you captured it. I, I think the biggest thing when we talk about masking and the design is to understand the context study of. You know, what, how does this compare to the neighborhood and how does it fit into the neighborhood and?
Yep, there is language in forty B that says it has to fit within the context of the neighborhood, so.
And that's what we're asking for. And I certainly don't think this does, but maybe their study will show that it does.
I will. There's some literature from the state that outlines that language. I will distribute that to the board prior to the next meeting. So we have it when we have that con. That heightened context study before us. So with that, Kasumi, sorry to delay, but please go ahead.
So I have a couple of comments and questions and first of all, I don't. Like everybody's keep saying, like, I don't think this fits the neighborhood at all. It's too big and too many units and. Looking at the renderings, it's just. To me, it looks like just a beige box standing in the way. That's my comment, but. What is the mail? So the mailroom and the package room, you're saying the mailroom in the package room? That is not big enough for the hundred unit and I. I'm sure you, everybody orders Amazons and UPS and you're showing like nice big windows on the front of the wall. You can see the mailbox really, but in in reality, when people move in, it's gonna be covered with. Dearie buddy packages, Amazon boxes, and you won't even see the mailbox with the hundred unit. You, you want the package room that it's secured, so no one else can access to it. About like at least two hundred square feet. I don't see that. And then also. With the parking, where the parking is like the post office, Amazon, Dearie Buddy truck going parked. It's too, it seems like it's too far away for that door location and. To be picky, I don't like the door swing because the the Dearie Buddy guy is. Like carrying all these packages and then coming down on the sidewalk and you have to pass the door. To open the door to get into the mailbox, like package room area. That doesn't work, first of all. And then also, I want you to look at the mailroom and then I would like to see a separate package room. And on the bike room storage, you said you're gonna have a wall-mounted bike rack. But I do see a windows on the exterior wall and the other side, the long wall is against the parking spot. So I don't see how that system works. So I want you to look at those and with the hundred unit, that's not enough. Bike storage area, you probably. I don't know, you probably fit like twenty bikes in that area. With access to electrical room and at the back of the house space and. From the start of the project, you're talking about this is, this project is site on, everybody can walk and bike and stuff. So I'm sure a lot of people is gonna biking and walking. So I would like to see bigger bike storage room. The outside area on each side, that is just not. Everybody keeps saying it, but that is just not enough for hundred unit because. It's not one family lives in this one building. So. It, it's, it just seems like you're just giving leftover space to call out the outdoor space. On the second floor, you are showing the fitness room, six hundred seventy-four square feet. And you're calling us or explaining us fitness. And the community room. With the hundred unit, you, I'd like to see close to thousand square feet if you're giving a fitness room. Adding the bathroom. So six hundred seventy-four, it's. You probably gonna have like. Two equipment and then with some like weight training, that's it. It's, it's like, it's just not big enough for hundred unit. Then upstairs, the community lounge area on the top floor. I didn't see a door between the residential corridor into the community area. You should definitely have separation to that. And then also. Again, like you, you need to provide bathroom if you are giving community lounge area. And then the double door from the terrace right above the utility room. That's doesn't work. That's like blocking the eagerest way to the stairs. So you, you have to move that door. So that's like bits and pieces of my. Comments on the building inside and I still don't understand. Why you don't have the building address on the front? And then you have your main entry on the side. The people has to walk around the building to see the building entry. And on the, on your renderings, you didn't even have any. I'm sure it's in progress, but like signage, building address, building numbers, like none of that stuff. And on the Han Street side, you covered up with plant and trees. So. How do you know people what the address is of this building? So I'd like to see like a front elevation with. And I think I mentioned this before, like a couple of times, like I don't see why. You can have the front entry on the Han Street or at least like stair directly access to the Han Street. That's all my comments.
Right, thank you, Kasumi. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Dave. I think Kasumi covered a lot of points, some of which I had on my list. So good job, Kasumi. I would just add again, it's probably still in the process, but. When we're laying out the parking field here. And as we move along, we absolutely have to have some visitor spaces designated. If we don't do that and they get filled with the residents, there's nowhere for visitors to park on the street here. And so they're gonna be. Wherever, side streets, they're gonna be parking on curbs somewhere. So there has to be, it's still part of the parking count and and our park, our bylaws account for. The, the spaces accommodating visitors and residents. But I think there needs to be a proportion of visitor spaces, depending on what the final unit count is. So I just want the applicant to take note of that. So. I think, I think Kasumi covered the rest of my comments, so I'll, I'll pause right there. Oh, sorry, one more thing. You did say something about the the caliper of the plants here? You already covered that, right?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we'll provide more specific information for that when we go back and coordinate our renderings with the site plan.
Okay, I think.
Yeah.
The typical chip comment of three foot instead of two foot, right?
Three, three inch instead of two inch.
Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, no, haven't, haven't done that. I, Dave, to be honest, I haven't delved in a whole lot. Because it is my humble opinion that all of this needs to change significantly. Before this project gets approved, so I'm trying not to get in-depth.
I understood. I just didn't know if you threw out the general comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, just think about caliper and they did mention about stuff being more hardy and mature right from the get-go. Just, you know, that means stuff starts bigger and whether these all meet that sort of criteria. But yeah, agreed, we'll get there. There'll be more changes to come for sure. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, question. Did you bring up? The earlier, I think you mentioned this about the percentage of open space. Did you ask them to look into that?
Yeah, they didn't give us a. They're gonna give us the literal open space as opposed to the zoning definition. That they have to calculate. We want to know impervious surface for versus percentage of green. They gotta do that for their stormwater stuff anyway, so.
I mean, this is, this is perfect. This is a perfect bird's eye view. I mean, look at all that parking slash roof. Compared to some trees and a little bit of grass, you know? I mean, it's not, it's like, I don't know, I'm not, I'm gonna throw up percentages. It's like eighty-five percent of pavement and roof right there. Ballpark, but.
That was my comment on the site plan, Joe. I'm in total agreement. And just to follow up with you, Joe, the Chip and I did bring up the size of the planting came up because I thought you had a really good comment at the last meeting about. The experience on the Han Street edge in that garage and it's just a large, you know. How tall is that first floor garage? You, you made the point, it's gonna be a lot of fieldstone, a couple punched out windows. That's what we're trying to cover with mature planting. What's the height of that, Stefano or Jason?
Floor-to-floor height is twelve feet, but because we are working with the grade, the driveway. To the east side here, slopes up from the Han Street and then the site gets more level. And Scott's probably gonna disagree with me when I say that, but it. The, the difference in elevation from the east corner of the property to the west corner of the property, I think, is almost six feet. So there's a pretty substantial grade change, given it's over two, what, two hundred and fifty feet or so. But so we, we pick up an extra. Maybe three feet on the east corner. So we end up with about fifteen feet. So we're doing what we can to cheat our siding down a little bit. But there's more wall on the east side than there is on the west corner of the building, if, if that made any sense.
Yeah. So to Kasumi's point, it would be great to get a rendering direct from directly across the street. What are we looking at there? I'd like to see the rendering with planting and without.
Yeah, and a comment, Mr. Chair, if I could, to Scott as he starts developing his stormwater and whatnot. I've never seen a site plan with elevations on it yet. So I'd love to know, I mean, if you go out to the site and sit in the middle of it. It's almost a story down, yet we're talking about. A comment was just made that there's a rise to the parking garage. I mean, I don't. This site can't be, yeah, I think you can lose a lot of this building down into the. Into the site if you look at that hard, but. I'm waiting to see elevations and let Scott get his hands on this. Since he's a newbie on it.
Yeah, to that point, Board members, Mr. Panos has offered site visits. We don't want to have to convene a meeting. So if you're interested in visiting the site as an individual. I will coordinate with the development team to allow that so you can go out there. But they, it, it could get clumsy. We don't want to make it a public meeting. They have some liability just so just inventing. Inviting members of the public to be wandering around there is probably not the best idea. But if Board members want to get out there, please just let me know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I kind of interrupted the flow of Board members. So, Joe, were you done?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you just brought up another point and made me think of something. I just remember that. When there was a previous project proposed here, there was talk of some serious grading on that site and I believe some potential blasting. And the neighbors were very concerned. So. Again, as the site gets further developed and they figure out what kind of building and how it's gonna fit. And what might need to be done to the site, right, with that rise in the back and all that. You know, we're obviously gonna be curious to to hear what what might need to happen there to make this project work and. The neighbors would certainly be, you know, concerned and wanna wanna have some input there. I know there's a little protocol with blasting. We've done it in other projects. It's happened around town, but. It's just another potential aspect to this project as well as they further develop the site that we all want to be well-informed about.
Oh, point well taken. Thank you, Dave. Okay, moving on. Joe was done. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I just had one comment.
Go ahead, Greg.
So I definitely second on the the grading, maybe just a couple of elevations, getting that in possibly. I think Scott said early June. But yeah, just showing any kind of grade difference because in my recollection of the site, it does drop down fairly significantly. And then just also including. I believe you mentioned just a construction site plan, just to hopefully mitigate some of the stormwater runoff during construction. To hopefully prevent any issues, any butters. And then just my last comment. That transformer, just as you're reviewing it, size-wise, where it can go, just including in any door swing clearance that's required. And then the bollard requirements around it, which will help. Kind of identify exactly where it can fit.
Okay, I see some folks from the public raising their hand. We are gonna do public comment, but we're not there yet. I will open it up at probably fairly soon. So. Sticking with comments from the board for now.
Yeah, Greg, your comment on the transformer is a great one. The, the, the battle we always have with WMGLD is, you know, they want it most convenient to them, which usually means right in front of the front door. And we want it as far back into the plot, into the lot as possible so that, you know, a car doesn't run into it and whatnot. So we always have this. Tug and pull and your comments for bollards and door swings are extremely appropriate.
Okay, anybody, any other members of the board? I'm just gonna add. I don't think the setback from the Han Street's. Big enough. It came up during the site plan too, but looking at this and looking at. How, looking at those renderings of that placed it with the. The, the houses next door, this building is going to loom over. Nahhan Street. I, I appreciate the architectural structure. um, Nahand Street. I, I appreciate the architectural strategies, you know, to, to break it down vertically and horizontally. It goes back to size, it, they fail because the building's too big. So you can do all those strategies you want, Stefano, it's not working because of the size of the building. It's just too much, um, so, um, I'm not particularly pleased with that either, so. Any other comments or questions from board members? If not, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Okay, if you are here to comment on what, um, I'd like as you heard, there's gonna be other aspects of this project discussed at later dates, traffic, public safety, other issues, but what we were here to talk about tonight is the site plan and the design presentation that you saw, so if folks could try to limit their, um, comments to what we're talking about tonight, it would be greatly appreciated. With that, I see an M melting, uh, if you can unmute yourself and give me your name and address, uh, that would be appreciated, and then your comments.
I believe I am unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes, he can.
Okay, I'm one hundred Nahand Street, so I'm diagonally across the street from where this complex will be.
I'm sorry, catch the address?
One hundred Nahand.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. As a number of individuals indicated, this complex, in my opinion, is way too big for Nahand Street. The street, to the best of my knowledge, is all one, two, and maybe an occasional three family house on it. It's, it's overwhelming, I mean, the site, I don't know exactly how big it is, but that site for one hundred units seems to me, and I'm not a construction person, seems to be overwhelming. Uh, it's the number of parking spaces, I mean, we're talking, I think you said a hundred thirty-seven parking places. Uh, it, that's a lot, um, it does not appear, again, I could not see the entire math based on the size of my computer, but it did not appear that there was much green space um, for residents. You know, a lot of it seems to be, you know, I'll say macadam, asphalt, concrete, which isn't, it's, is not very inviting, in my opinion, um. I mean, that's, I, I have other issues, but clearly that's not something that people wanna, you know, parking, getting in and out of that building, et cetera, which I gather will be, you know, something for a later date. But a hundred units in that area, I, I just don't think it's it's fee- I don't think it's feasible, I don't think it's, it looks that great. I think there's a lot of issues, the, the young woman that spoke before mentioned a number of them. Yeah, I, like I said, I have other concerns, but I gather you don't wanna hear about tho- those right at this point. So that's really what I have to say, I, I, I just don't think it, I don't think it's good for the site personally.
Okay, thank you, I, I do encourage you, though, I don't wanna discourage you from participating in the process going forward because traffic and public safety are serious concerns that have been raised by this board, and that will be discussed at future meetings, so I encourage you to continue to attend those meetings and continue to follow it and make your voice heard, so thank you.
Have no fear, I will.
Okay, the next up, uh, hand I saw up was a V de Sessa. Uh, and my apologies for mispronouncing that name.
Yes, this is Vincenti Chuck at thirty-seven Green Street.
Please, go ahead.
Two, uh, two general questions, one about, there's been a lot of mention about spillover parking onto the street. Isn't that something that can be managed by the town with signage and enforcement? And the, the, the next question is, that site has, was bit with a home for a grinding milling operation that handled cutting fluids and so forth? Is there a requirement to have that soil evaluated for ca- contamination, and has it been done?
Mr. Panos, can you, uh, talk about any environmental testing or your knowledge of the entire environmental state of the site?
My understanding is uh, and I don't have the record in front of me, I apologize, but I wanna say, and don't hold me to the date, back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, there were significant U S T underground storage tank removals, uh, and those would have been supervised by the Wakefield Fire Department. Um, they went through and Scott, please through the chair, uh, step in, um. Uh, they would have gone through at least reporting to the D E P, particularly if there was anything found in the ground around those U S Ts, any kind of an emission, uh, spill, and they all got a clean bill of health, that's the extent of any subsurface testing that I'm aware of. Um, I do not believe that, uh, outside of that, any twenty-one E testing has taken place.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, but I would be interested to know, because of the operation that were performed there, uh, as you know, years ago, people would open the back door and just throw the cutting oils out the back door. Has any other evaluation been done on the site, other than for the storage tank removal, or is it required?
I, I believe Mr. Panos has answered that question, so.
Well, he mentioned specifically for storage tanks.
But I asked him about, I asked him about the environmental state of the entirety of the site. Uh, do you have anything to add, Mr. Panos?
I don't, I'm unaware of any twenty-one E testing outside of the U S T removals.
Okay, thank you.
Is it required?
Yep, well, I'm just reading, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Just reading the, uh, project eligibility letter. Um, you know, it, it, the project has to be in compliance with all the state and federal regulations. Um, and then there's more, but it says the applicant should expect the municipality Wakefield will require evidence of such compliance prior to the issuance of a building permit. But it, there needs to be some sort of study as part of, of this process, I'm sure there's sand war maps and things like that, they'll tell you what was there. Um, but we'd like to know, and I'm sure some of the town departments would like to know when their preliminary, um, test bits and such, what, what's coming out of there? I think we have a right to know that.
And so, Mr. Chair, does Dave, just to add, the, the letter that we got on May second had a DPW comment about October twenty twenty-three town engineer witnessed test holes to support the stormwater system, and they observed some sheen over the groundwater. And so it said M C G is scheduling soil testing in the coming weeks, will look for evidence of this condition. It mentions the U S Ts being removed, but it sounds like there's more to happen on the site. And we, we should be able to get some more information from the DPW and the town engineer uh, relative to the site's can, overall condition.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, if, if, if I can, Mr. Chair, uh, add to that, um, this is a mass develop, uh, mass housing rather, uh, development. And as such, it's it requires financing through the New England Fund, which is basically financing from your neighborhood, local community banks, so long as it's a, uh, uh, a, uh, Boston Federal Home Loan Bank member. And I can tell you for certain that they will require twenty-one E uh, testing before committing to financing, or before providing financing. So this project will not be built if it's, if the property is dirty.
Yep, so we've made note of that, and we'll, we'll certainly, when we have Mr. Renault here from the DPW, we'll, we'll
Okay.
We'll coordinate with him on that.
That's all.
Thank you, um, I see Karen McMaster. If you could give, uh, your address, please, Karen? You're on mute?
Looks like she's struggling to unmute herself.
Yeah. Karen, I got we'll give you another minute here, but.
Can you unmute her? Is that possible? I know.
We can mute somebody if they're, the other way around, if they're getting out of control.
Right, yeah.
We can kick them out if we have to.
Right, right.
We can unmute them.
I know she's been following closely, cuz she comes to the subcommittee meetings too, so I wanna give her a chance to speak. But we're having some issues here. All right, why don't I bring it back to the board, and if Miss, uh, Karen McMaster can uh, well, there's another hand, Paula Gardella.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
I can, Paula, can you just give your address, please?
Ten Wilson Road.
Please go ahead.
I'll be looking at this monstrosity, and that's what it is, a monstrosity. Um, anybody who walks down Nahand Street can see that this is a residential area. It's not commercial, it's not Grayson Lofts, it's residential, and this is an absolute joke to put something of this size in this area. I can't even imagine how structurally we will be able to handle this. I can't, I can't fathom it, I, I'm almost reduced to tears as I'm speaking. Um, thank you, board, I agree with you one hundred and ten percent, Karen, I'm not as good at thi- at this as you, but I'm sure you're dying to speak because uh, I, I can't imagine this thing going into my neighborhood. That's all I'll say, thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Thank you. I saw Karen had left and come back, Karen, are you able to unmute yourself now and speak?
If not, I see a Mr. Joseph Conway trying to raise his hands physically in the video, so maybe you could call on him.
Yeah, while we do that, thank you, Dave. Mr. Conway, if you just provide your address for the record, please?
My name is, uh, Joseph Conway, I live at eighteen Wilson Road, I'm a direct butter to the east side of the project. And I have a couple of questions. I'd like, uh, to be answered if, if I could get them. I've seen renderings of the, uh, building from the Nahand Street side and the west side, but I haven't seen any renderings of the east side of the building where I live. Okay, and I live to the e- east to the rear of the project. The other thing is, I, uh, in looking at the project plan, one of the plans, it showed a snow, uh, a snow storage area uh, on the east side of the building to the rear, which is closest to my house. And, uh, I've brought up in previous meetings, I know you're gonna discuss it another later, about, uh, water runoff and drainage, and looking at the parking lot on the east side of the building and on the backside of the building. I only see one snow storage area, and it's behind my house. Okay, on the east side. So my question is, where's that water gonna go? Currently, if you've been on the site, the level of my stockade fence on the east side of the project is my fence. And it's pretty level with the, uh, area of the project. So my question is, you st- stack up all that snow, six, eight, ten, twenty feet of snow on that side of the building. I see a, a, uh, it looks like a retaining wall on that side, how high is the retaining wall? And if you pile fifteen, twenty feet of snow, which you'll get, cuz there's no, it doesn't appear to be any other place to put it, is that gonna go into my yard, which is pretty level with that now? Like, that's one of my problems, but then I've seen, like I say, I've seen the, the building moved a little bit, and I've seen it, uh, the other po- the other sides of the building. I don't see anything on, on the east side of the building, it seems to be, uh, everything about the other two, three sides. I'd just like to know if, uh, if there's anything we can take a look at that.
Yep, sure thing, so Mr. Conway, you, you Mr. Tower Bell and I did bring up, um, with, when Mr. Cameron just joined the project team, and it was his first meeting on Monday with us, we asked him to look at both, uh, that and stormwater runoff for residents of Wilson Road there. As it gets further back in the site, there is a slight elevation, there is an elevation change uh, between this property and some, some of the properties down on, on that side as well. So we've alerted Mr. Cameron to that, he's promised to take a look at that. Um, I don't know if they're prepared to answer anything about the snow storage tonight, but if, if you're not, uh, please put that on your list as something that, that's something we're going to want to hear about. Um, and going forward, as you look at your site plan, how are you gonna deal with snow storage across the entirety of the site, so? Um, I don't expect you to have an answer, if you do, that's great, um, but if not, um, it's on my list and I will not let that go, and, uh, so, Mr. Panos, if you wanna answer that, fine, if not, if you wanna just hold that.
I think there is, actually, Mr. Chair, I think there is a rendering to the east side as well, that was seen.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too, the
The architect.
Yeah, Mr. Basso did show, uh, the east side, that's where the main entrance was, Mr. Conway. Um, maybe he can pull that up.
Well, can we share a screen?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Yep.
Yeah, through the chair, while Stefano was bringing that up, um, and thank you for the, uh, uh, the feedback, uh, from Mr. Conway, um, the, the you, I was gonna confirm that you did bring that to our attention, we had seen it as well in our initial site investigation, and had, had noted that on our own as well, so we're, we're well, very well aware of it. Uh, it is a little early for me to comment, uh, and, and tell you how, uh, but I can say that, um, we are, uh, totally obligated professionally, uh, but regulator, from the regulation standpoint, um, uh, there's a lot, a lot of protection there, and we will, we will, uh, uh, be sure to, uh, present to our, our mitigation in that area of the property, uh, when, when we present, when we're ready to present that.
And if I, if I may add to that, uh, through the chair, obviously, we can't comment on specifics until the engineering is complete, but one thing I can promise is that through a comprehensive stormwater management plan, the stormwater will be treated on uh, on or through site, and will make the existing condition better. I can state that as almost a matter of fact, only because there's either no or very little stormwater management on site as we speak. There will be stormwater management. That's all I can say, and, and more to come.
Yep, okay. So, Mr. Basso, if you could just, um, walk Mr. Conway through this a little bit.
Yeah, so this is the view, uh, from the east side, uh, looking at the joint in the building between the four-story piece that runs along Nahand Street and the five-story ledge that runs back away from the street. And I apologize, I didn't realize that on our, um, plan set that we had submitted, we have a convenient little key plan that shows the site plan with the footprint of the building, and it tags each view, so you can easily see where you're looking from, and on our presentation here, we, we lost that, um, so I'll add that back in, so we have it for the next, um, presentation. But this is standing right up, right along the property line um, on the eastern driveway side, looking at the main entry lobby.
Okay, thank you.
Well. I
Okay, so, Mr. Conway, is that it?
No. I appreciate, uh, what he's saying, but that's to the front section of the building, like I understand from what he's saying, that there is no, uh, rendition of the back end of the proper, wh- where my area of concern is. That's, that's the problem I got, is on the back end, not where the entrance is to the building, okay? The other thing is, it was brought up earlier in this meeting, and I've brought it up previous ones, is that um, they mentioned blasting, okay? And the blasting, uh, if there is any to be done, which I'm sure there's gonna be some done, because behind my house, even in my yard, there's blue ledge. And there's quite a bit of it. And there has been, uh, prior to this development, um, some movement of, uh, some ledge taken out of the, from the, the property in question, where the building is supposed to be put. That center of that back end of the building is pretty much all blue ledge, which, if you don't know, you will find out, I'm sure you are, they already know that. So then, when you disturb that with the So then when you disturb that with the, with blasting or, uh, hammering it, which we've had, uh, done in the past, that's actually shake, shaken, uh, my home. And, uh, it's on record that, uh, I had made, I actually made a complaint earlier before this project of, uh, I have a couple of, uh, ceilings that were cracked due to the, uh, the disturbance of that.
Yep, so i- i- as you heard, Mr. Hadfield on the board, uh, flagged that for us. That's something that we're going to be interested in going forward. Again, part of it is their engineer is just new to this, and we're, we're a long way away from talking about construction. Uh, we have a lot more work to do on this proposal, as you've heard many board members, but we will not forget that, and we will, we will circle back to that. So thank you for, uh, your comments. Thank you for attending tonight. I see Karen McMaster now that you are, uh, you're, you're.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Sorry, technical.
Could you just provide your address, please? Yep, no problem.
I'm twenty, twenty-five Nahand Street. Um, so you really don't have to walk the site. I was, I walked this neighborhood all the time, and I was standing on the sidewalk and just standing there and looking at it um, from the sidewalk. I don't have to enter the property, um, or anything like that. I can't understand how you're gonna fit this L shape building with the fi- it's, I don't know, I'm gonna just, it, it's so massive, and it seems like you guys are cramming everything in. You got these bump outs, these balconies, it's an L shape. It's cramming in, and to me, it's a very busy building. It looks busy, and it's gonna con- I would confuse me if I was an Amazon driver or anybody. Where am I going in this massive development that does not even fit the fabric of the neighborhood at all, not even close? Um, I would think it would be a lot easier for the whole development team and Mr. Cameron and everybody if you just downsized it and make it easier for everybody. Go down more units and make everything fit and make your job easier and make the neighbors happier. Um, I, I don't know how anybody could drive by and not see and look at those scenarios that he put up on, on the, um, the PowerPoint, that this is, looks like it's a Godzilla neighborhood that's trampling through, you know, a building that's trampling through a neighborhood that cannot hold that. Um, if you count, Mr. Cameron, I don't know if you've driven down the street, there's a hundred and six actual dwellings on that street. You want to add a hundred units. And I'm pretty sure that's an engineering thing with the town and Mr. Renault, but we haven't had our water or sewer pipes or anything like that updated in a long time. So how are we gonna feed all of this extra stuff into our existing infrastructure? Um, I know this is in the beginning, but these are my huge concerns from day one. Water pressure, I think I counted, there was eight fire hydrants on the Han Street. I don't care if you add twenty right there. If you don't have water pressure, you're not keeping people safe. So you guys aren't listening to us. It's too big. Y- y- you're cramming parking spots. I might be repeating myself, but it's too big. You easily have to go down at least, at least twenty-five units. Um, I know the Dell developer's in there to make money. He doesn't care about the neighborhood. It's pretty apparent. Um, and I wish, really, I think it would be a lot easier and be costly, uh, a little bit, but, you know, cost efficient if he listened and just said, you know what? Let's make it smaller and make everybody's job easier. So that's really all I have to say, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that want to comment? Hearing and seeing none, back to the board. Pleasure of the board. Mickey, go ahead.
Um, I'll be quick.
Yep.
Go back to the start. I'd like to see the developer here. Um, I'd like to see, um, more context from, um, renderings. And I'd like to see a, um, shadow study. This thing's huge. And I'd like the developer there to look in the eyes of these people that are next door and tell them they're not gonna see the sun at all. Because there won't be any. And I, I'd like to know exactly what that impact is. And I know it's silent right now because you don't want to answer it, and you don't want the developer to sit there, but I think he deserves, these neighbors deserve to have, be able to look him in the eye and say, you're doing this to us. It's really, it's, it's an emotional thing what this building is doing. I know you're just trying to develop it. It's forty B, and there's only so many tools that we have. But you need to really see the people that are in the neighbors, in this neighborhood, and what this building is going to do. And to their sunlight, to their happiness. And not to mention the traffic, that, that's gonna have its own impact on the number of units. But I like to, I'd like to suggest that a shadow study be done. Thank you, that's all.
That's a very good point, Mr. Panos. Uh, I'd like to push that as well. You can add that to your list and, we think, I think that's an important thing. And again, that's why I asked upfront about the developer. I think they should be here. As well. Maybe at the traffic meeting, they can come and hear about folks too, because as, as we've said from the beginning, our, our two biggest concerns that we really even haven't gotten into yet is, uh, public safety and the size of this building. It's, it, for me, you know, you know, it's been very frustrating. You guys, this development team was factually dishonest when you were discussing the timing of the traffic study. And you're being intellectually dishonest with this group and with the town and with the neighbors not being willing to discuss massing and scale and number of units. And that's gotta stop. We have a traffic advisory committee meeting on Friday. Hopefully, we'll have a final uh, version of their comments coming out of that. Uh, I'm gonna attend that, fellow board members. So when I, when I get out of that meeting, a- as part of that meeting, I'm going to try to coordinate with Mr. Renault, Chief Sullivan, and Lieutenant Anderson when we can have our meeting on traffic, when they can reach it. So. Anybody else? With that, Mr. Panos, I, I, I think we have to see what comes out of the traffic advisory committee on Friday before we set the next plan. Once I hear that, uh, I'll convene a subcommittee meeting with Mr. Taubell and your team, so we can uh, identify dates at work. I'm not convinced. We might have to have a special meeting, given the, uh, availability of our subject matter experts, so I'm gonna throw that out there to board members and Mr. Panos, to you and your team. Um, but obviously, I'll coordinate that closely, so you can have the, uh, the right members from your team there. So with that, uh, board members, if there's nothing else, I think we should, uh, continue the matter. Uh, until May twenty-second is at least a placeholder. And then we'll see what happens at the traffic advisory committee on Friday. If someone, uh, Dave or anyone else, if you guys have other thoughts on that, uh, I'd be willing to hear it, but that's kind of where my head is right now.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Chip.
Oh, no, you, you're up.
No, I was just gonna say, I think we just continue for two weeks, hopefully get some feedback, and hopefully you guys can have a subcommittee meeting between now and then, and just see what the direction is we go. And we reconvene in two weeks. If there are updates, great. If not, we see what we need, need to do, either continue again or have a special meeting if it, we feel like we gotta pull a bunch of people together. And it's gonna take a while, then we can do other projects on a regularly scheduled meeting. But I, I agree with you, but let's, for now, I think continue to two weeks and see where, see where things are. Keep it moving.
Chip?
Agreed.
Okay, with that, uh, I'll take a motion to continue the matter.
Mr. Chair, real quick?
Yep. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Joe. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Um, in the subcommittee meetings, I, I haven't attended, but I'm, I'm assuming you guys are pushing for less units? Is there a pushback from them?
Yeah, Joe, we have not discussed less units because they won't until T A C is done.
That's why I made the comments that I did, Joe.
Okay, you're correct. Okay.
Been extremely frustrating. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this hearing to our May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Matters continued. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you to the neighbors for, for turning out and for your comments. As you heard, we continue to the twenty-second. There's a traffic advisory committee meeting on Friday morning. Uh, you can find that, uh, information on that in the town's website, if you'd like to log on to that as well. Uh, so with that, uh, moving on on our agenda.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Good time.
Thank you. We're on to other matters. I know, uh, folks probably want to get going here, because we got a rare light night here. Uh, but Chip, we did wanna, uh, Gail gave me the summer dates that we had. Uh, right now, we're scheduled for, uh, Greg, for you. We usually meet the twice a month, but during, uh, July and August, we only meet once a month. Uh, right now, those meetings are scheduled for July tenth or fourteenth. So I'm gonna put that out there. Uh, I don't expect everyone to know exactly. But may, I want to make sure maybe at the next meeting that we have a quorum for those dates.
I think we do need to do it by the next meeting, just because of the last date to submit applications, it would then get into June, and, you know, so Gail needs to know, so.
Yeah, because that July.
If we don't know tonight, at the next meeting, we gotta at least know. Is July tenth gonna hold, or do we need to bump it a week type of thing?
Right, because the, the, the last date to submit something for the July tenth meeting is June eleventh. So if anything, we'd have to go backwards, right? Because to your point, we're right on, we'd be right on top of it.
Right.
So we're July tenth and August fourteenth?
Yeah. So folks can double check their calendars for those dates. On something like that, you can just shoot me an email or a text. That's not deliberating, so we can, uh, I can gather that.
Does it look okay? Does anyone know of any conflict right now that we know we might need to consider, or they need time to check it? Just curious. I'm, I'm good.
I'm, I'm good with this, Chair, yeah.
It's usually your trip to New Hampshire, Dave, that we're concerned about.
No, well.
Or, or a robot.
Yeah, no, no, not the. Why want people? Why I want people to be sure is that we're, we're gonna be pressed on numbers on the case we just heard. So w- we, I don't, if we gotta move it, we gotta move it. That's fine. I don't want anyone to cancel a vacation. But we've got to get our quorum. We, we need our members there. And Joe, that's, you're saying it's not good for you?
No, I'm, I'm good with it. Those dates are fine. Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm good.
All right, I appear to be good for now, but double check, check with your families and whatever, and make sure we're good. All right, I don't really have anything else other than to say go Bruins, but, uh, I think we've got some minutes. Yeah. Expertly prepared, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of our April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four hearing. Expertly prepared by Gail Conroy.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made second. We can do a voice photo minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Well, I was just gonna let Greg say, ask a question or say something if you wanted to.
I asked, I asked my question. I'm good. It's nice meeting all of you. Look forward to it.
Nice to meet you. We'll do it, we'll do it in person one of these days.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
Welcome aboard.
Adjourn is in order, and, uh, by voiceful, uh, approved. Now, go Bruins.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.